First item on our agenda is public comment on matters that are on the agenda today. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to any of those items?
I see no comments, so we will move ahead.
We do not have any rezonings or docket approvals to deal with today. We have a fairly short, we have a summary of the November 13th meeting for approval.
Move to approve, Mayor.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilmember Ellinger and a second by Councilmember DeCamp to approve the summary of November 13th. Any discussion? Those in favor, please vote a electronically. Those opposed, vote nay. Thank you very much. If you have not yet voted, please do so. Only have seven votes. Thank you. We now have eight votes that motion carries. We have no budget amendments. We have a short list of new business items.
Move for approval.
Have a motion by Councilmember DeCamp and a second by Councilmember Stenit to approve the new business items. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. Those in favor, please vote a electronically. Those opposed, vote nay. Councilmember DeCamp, thank you. All right. Councilmember Stevens, I don't have a vote. You yet?
I vote yes.
All right. That works too. Thank you. Those items are approved. Brings us down to presentations. The first one is the Intergovernmental Committee. Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor. We're going back to September 11th. We've got to put this on the agenda, so there were three items discussed. Two of them, there was no motion made. One of them was the permit process for customer service and also the county attorney. We did forward that one over to Budget and Finance. We did talk about the policy in naming and renaming LFUC facilities, and there was a motion, I'd like to make a motion to recommend that the parks renaming and naming policy be amended to require that parks would submit any naming and renaming recommendation to the council and planning committees for consideration. So, Mayor.
I have a motion from Councilmember Maloney and a second from Councilmember Beard. Is there any discussion? Those in favor, please indicate by voting a electronically. Those opposed, vote nay. Thank you very much. Motion carries.
Last week, we had a couple things on the intergovernment, and one of them would review the boards and commission. That will continue to stay in for more discussion. We will have another meeting in January to talk about maybe cutting some of the boards out. That was brought up, and there was no motion made out of that. Also, we had financial disclosure requirement of board and commission. We discussed that, and I believe that is going to be brought up at the same time in January for continued discussion. And we also had some cleanup items. We have a couple motions for cleanup, but there were no motions to be brought to this. So, and that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the presentation from our dog task force. Councilmember Stenit.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Everyone has a copy of the presentation, I believe. Dean, are we passing out the presentation? Just the PowerPoint. Just the PowerPoint first. I know many of you have waited for this report, as many citizens have. It's probably one of our top five issues that we deal with on a daily basis in terms of in the districts and district issues. May not be one of the bigger issues in Lexington as a whole, but I think some people would argue from our report findings that this is a major problem in Lexington. And hopefully, today will be a beginning and a start in heading our dog management issues in the right direction. I thought it'd only be appropriate, because this is a serious topic, but we take a minute to enlighten ourselves, so to speak, and have a little bit of fun first.
Look at the cute dog.
Now, remember that model as we're giving this presentation. Don't judge us too quickly. Back in the summer, the council voted to form a task force to look at several issues. The first issue in regards to dogs was a staffing animal care and control. The second was the leash ordinance. The third was the kennel ordinance. And last but not least was the barking slash noise ordinance as it pertains to dogs. The task force itself, we had six meetings, October 2nd being the lone public hearing, and I'll go over those numbers here in a second. Task force members include myself, Andrea Weddle from the Department of Law, Rick Curtis from the Public Safety Commissioner's Office, Lieutenant Doug Pape from the Lexington Police Department, Patsy Booth from the mayor's office, Bert Hawkins from the Lexington Humane Society, Nathan Bowling, and Chief Bowling is here with us today of animal care and control. I didn't recognize him back here without his uniform, so the intimidation factor's not there today, but he is here in attendance, and I appreciate his support through all this. Our county attorney, Larry Roberts, he is actually traveling today but could not be here, but he played a big role in the task force. Dr. Melinda Rowe and Jessica Cobb of the Health Department. And then we also had several citizen members who also participated. Janet Cowan, who represented Friends of the Dog Park. Ralph and Peggy Harrell from the Lexington Kennel Club. And then several district representations, as you see there in front of you and also in your packets. I also want to thank my legislative aide, Dina Melvin. A lot of this couldn't have been done without her, so I really appreciate her support on all this. And we've put together a binder that we'll pass out here at the end of the presentation today, which each of you can keep at your desk. We also have one for the commissioners and mayor's office to kind of answer guide for all your dog management issues and some of the work that we put together through our discussions on the task force. So you'll each have a binder with all that information in there as well. Next, let's start off and talk about how big really is the problem. Over a two-week period, we took emails on the dog task force, as well as had a public hearing. You can see the numbers there, broken down by category. Several from email formats. There were several letters. We didn't break it down into those categories, but you can see about 140 responses over a two-week period asking us to address various dog issues. Under the other category, you'll see issues such as vicious dogs, the tethering of animals in there as well under the other category. So what do citizens really want? I think that's why we're all here. That's what we're trying to address. That's what we're trying to figure out. I think the first thing that we've discovered through the task force work is we want a quicker response time as citizens in this county. That response time, if you look back in 1998, we averaged close to five minutes responding to your dog management calls or issues when you called the animal care and control office. Today, you can look there, our average response time is 30 minutes and going up, up to one day, in terms of our response and the ability to get to citizens' complaints effectively. Next, knowledge. People want to know what options they have for enforcing our current laws. You know, it kind of was ironic earlier today that we had the housing issue in debate, and that pretty much was centered around enforcement. Well, there's a big E on this debate as well, and that's enforcement as well. Tougher laws. Increased fines, more prosecutions. That's what we got back from many citizens who had filed complaints, their neighbors had been cited. There were some cases that had been sent to court, but they were mediated and never made it to the actual prosecution stage. Then last but not least, people want safer neighborhoods, better quality of life. That is in the form of more dog parks, less dogs running loose. And then, I'm sorry, the last thing, and definitely not least, is end of their frustration. There was a big frustration in our community, we found out, in regards to dog management issues. Relationships. It's important to talk about relationships as we talk about how we manage our dog issues here in Fayette County. First of all, animal care and control has a contractual relationship with LFUCG to perform our dog animal management functions. They are not employees of LFUCG. A lot of people have that impression that they are under the guise of our government, but they are actually contractual bodies separate from us. Next, the contract with the animal care and control is funded through our public safety budget, and we'll go over those numbers here in a minute. And thanks to our former commissioner of public safety, Ms. Langston, who put that into their budget a couple years ago. Rather than being an outside agency, we've taken a little bit more ownership over their budget and what kind of funding they're receiving each year. Last but not least, the Lexington Humane Society is not a government agency. They're a separate nonprofit agency. I think that confusion has often had in our community as well. So let's talk about the numbers. Most important thing here on this slide, if you look going back to 1999, we gave close to $560,000 to animal care and control contractually to form our animal care and control duties. If you look around 2001, that dropped down, as well as in 2004 decreased again. But starting in 2006, it's steadily back up on the rise to where we think it should be. Part of the funding issue, starting back to 1998, when they had several animal care and control officers on the budget, part of their budget was being supplemented by the Humane Society, which that funding stopped, I believe, is in 2001. So there is a dip in some of the numbers that correlates to how many officers are on the streets. Next, number one problem. And this is the number one item that we discovered really needed the most attention. I know many councils before us have had task force and meetings and committees on the dog management issues, but overall, our number one problem is simply cannot enforce our current ordinances, or any changes in ordinances for that matter, effectively without additional animal care and control staff. Just a quick chart, you can read it better in your PowerPoint packet, but this shows the number of officers, the number of support personnel at animal care and control that's under Chief Bowling's operation. They currently have six field officers that respond to our dog calls 24/7. That's exactly what we're going to talk about next. Total number of animal care and control officers in 1998, there were 12. Total number of animal care and control officers in 2007, six. Can you see the problem? Past 10 years, increase in population here in Fayette County, about at least 50,000 people. Increase in households, about an estimate of 12,000 households. Again, staffing is our biggest obstacle. This is a summary year-to-date, and I thank Chief Bowling for providing this for us, of the number of complaints through the month of October here in Fayette County to animal care and control. Approximately 9,296 complaints were lodged at animal care and control through the month of October. That equates to about 1,550 per officer to respond to. This slide will show council members the numbers in terms of where we should be here in Fayette County. It justifies based on the National Animal Care and Control Association calculations that a city our size should require at least 11 or close to 12 officers, so that you can have eight available seven days a week here in the city. So we should be employing up to 12 officers here in our community to perform adequate dog control functions. The next slide will show you basically the breakdown in budgetary items in terms of the cost for one animal care and control officer here. To hire one additional officer is $22,150. There is some training they do go through after 90-day in-house training, which costs about $2,000, and that is done outside of the agency. Also, the other big item that we're looking at in terms of their cost is vehicles. Obviously, they all can't ride in the same car, so we're looking at providing a more efficient vehicle than we have today, so they can be on the road and obviously save fuel costs, which we're all concerned about now. Those vehicles, many of them, and Chief Bowling, correct me if I'm wrong, are probably averaging around 10 years' old. So, you know, a 10-year-old vehicle versus today's standards, probably a big difference on fuel economy. So, you've heard a little bit about the animal care and control staffing, what their current call volume is, what their current levels are, how much it costs to add an officer. So here are the recommendations from the task force. One, hire six additional ACC officers to return staffing levels to 1998. Hire up to three auxiliary personnel to support the officers. And these are your dispatchers, your intake officers, and your kennel staff personnel. And last but not least, purchase three additional vehicles, so that those six new hires can obviously have a vehicle to be on the streets in. Cost. I know we all want to talk about the dollars and cents, so here's how it breaks down. If you look at six officers, that's about $132,000 additionally money they will need in their budget. Three auxiliary personnel at $16,640 on average. And then training expenses, insurance, and fuel, because with additional officers and vehicles, there'll be additional insurances and expenses. Sure look at a total budget request, about $212,000. And then I separated the three vehicles out, because obviously, we do bond vehicles, and that could be part of a bonding package perhaps with our other public safety vehicles that we buy each year going forward. Points to consider, and these are the key points in summation of what we just covered on the animal care and control side. One, this is a starting point, as I said in the beginning of my presentation. It's not going to be a silver bullet. It's not going to change things overnight, but I think the additional personnel will add to our enforcement efforts. This is very important, and I appreciate Bert Hawkins for continuously making this during our task force work. And that's anything we do today, whether it be changing staffing or changing the way our ordinances are written, will not make any violations go away. They'll only allow quicker, more efficient response time. After 11:30 PM here in Fayette County, they are on a on-call service only, so that means we're not 24/7 on duty there at ACC. One of the things we did talk about and could perhaps add to further discussion would be to talk with our police department to see if they possibly could pick up the slack after the 11:30 PM hour, but I'll talk about that a little bit more later. And then last but not least, they still have to see the violations and/or to write a citation, and we're still heavily relying upon citizens to come and testify when they see a violation occur. Still need that to happen, no matter if we add six officers or keep at the current six. The leash ordinance. A lot of people talk about the leash ordinance and ask, what is it? What exactly is it? Well, for our purposes, we focused on, well, let's see, let me skip to the next slide. We focused on two parts of the dogs running at large ordinance. Part B, which basically says that any dog that's off the owner's property or harbors' property has to be on a leash. However, if a dog is on an owner's property, they may be off the leash in the presence of the dog owner. And then number E, or numeral E, the owner or harbor of any dog found running is in violation of this section, and the penalties are $10, but not more than $50. So those are the two big areas that we focused on throughout our discussions as we looked into the dogs run at large and the leash ordinance. The other ordinance we looked at a little bit is dogs that are unleashed in parks. I know that's a hobby for many people, or an avenue that many people choose to do and take their dogs to a park, but it is illegal to take your dog to a park and take it off a leash. And the fines probably in this ordinance, we didn't get to talking about the fines in this ordinance specifically, but probably need to match any changes to the leash law We also looked at in comparing our different ordinances that we have on the books to other cities around Lexington. Louisville, Cincinnati, and Knoxville are listed there. The big thing we looked at was the summary of ordinances, who enforces it, the penalties and fines, and then confiscation of dogs. I know that has been a very sore subject for a lot of people when we start talking about dog management issues, but as you can look there, no one advocates confiscation of any animal on our task force or through this comparison on the slide. I think the big thing that stands out is some other cities actually do have jail time for leash law violations in their ordinances. You'll see that as a common thing as we look at the other two ordinances we were charged to look at. The other big difference is, you can see, animal care and control is our primary enforcement agency at this point in Lexington, as well as Louisville, but Cincinnati and Knoxville does look at police officers as enforcing some of their laws as well. And it's also important to note that our police officers are also sworn dog wardens here in the county, so it would not be anything that would be added to their sworn duties. It is part of their job description here in Fayette County. Not that we're advocating that they need to enforce it, but just for comparison's sake. Leash ordinance recommend changes. The biggest and only recommended change we looked at on the leash ordinance was changing the Section 1 subsection E, and that's regard to the fines. We looked at capping the fences over a 36-month period, so that means you can commit up to this many offenses over that 36-month period, and then it resets. Because again, it's important to know, the offenses are tied to the owner, not to the dog. So the first offense would start at $50 in lieu of the current $25, but not more than $500. That would be at the discretion of the prosecuting attorney and the courts. Second, $100. Third, $250. And fourth offense, and each subsequent offense would be $500. Points to consider once again, there's no evidence on record that anyone in Lexington has more than two convictions on a dog-related offense on the books. So we're not even getting to the third and fourth offenses in Fayette County. Video cameras that this council approved about a year ago are helping control some of this. More ACC staffing will obviously help the enforcement of our leash laws. And then this was a topic that we debated extensively on the dog task force, and there are still concerns about allowing a dog unrestrained on an owner's property, and that specifically goes if you're walking down the street with your dog or pet or running, for that matter, and their dog is on their property. Well, how many dogs that are off a leash, even with their owner there, are going to stop and not run off the property at you and your dog, or if there's a squirrel or something else? Some people on the task force did feel like we should have a mandatory leash off for everybody, whether they're on their property. If they're not behind a fence, they should be on a leash. So that's something the council can still consider, but as far as the task force did not vote to recommend that the council, because we felt like the current law is sufficient in enforcing what it says it enforces, and that's as long as the dog is in the owner's care, they can be in the front yard off a leash. But once that owner goes inside and leaves their dog out there by itself, they are indeed violation of our leash ordinance. Or if that dog leaves the property and chases another dog or a person, they are in violation of the leash ordinance. And at that point, it would be a matter of enforcement. Kennel ordinances. We looked at the kennel ordinance and perhaps a way to look at the number of dogs or limiting the number of dogs on a property. It's important to note, and I'll reiterate this here in a second, but our current kennel law has no limit on how many dogs a person can have on a property. I'll repeat that. Our current kennel law does not set any type of limit on how many dogs an owner can have on their property. As long as they're housed properly and cared for properly, you can have unlimited number of dogs on your property. What the kennel ordinance does say, though, is once you reach to the level of eight dogs, you must then apply for a kennel license. Then upon approval and inspection by several agencies in LFUCG, and I'll get there in a second, then you are issued a kennel license. That is renewable every year, every 12 months. And let's see, let me go to the next slide. The fee for a kennel licensing here in Fayette County is currently $25. Again, we looked at other cities. There are four cities we looked at, the same four. The biggest difference here is obviously the fees that they charge. Lexington, $25. Louisville has developed a class system ranging from $100 on up to $150, depending on the class of property in your area. Knoxville, $10. And then last but not least, I'm sorry, Knoxville's $25, and Cincinnati's $10. We also looked at other cities, and I think Paul Schoneger of the council staff were getting us some excellent data to look at. We looked at what other governments are doing across the country and in Kentucky in terms of how many animals they are limiting. You can see there, other cities in Kentucky have put limits on dogs and cats, Jefferson Town being eight, and the lowest being six in many other cities. And then across the country, other municipalities have looked at limiting the number of dogs that an owner can have on their property. Here are the recommendations from the task force. Let me say, first of all, and trying to limit that the number of dogs a person can have on their property is very hard to do, for one big reason. One dog on a street can cause just as much trouble as five dogs. And trying to put a limit, you start looking at breed, size, you start looking at several factors that make that limit hard to determine. And we on the task force just couldn't come to a good way, I guess, or a good process to get to, how do we, where do we draw the line in sand at? But we'll give you a recommendation on that here in a second. One thing we did look at is the kennel licensing fee, because we discovered that the $25 current fee is not even coming close to covering the cost that we incur here in the government to go out and administer that fee, because it requires inspections by our code enforcement, as you can see, building inspection, the Health Department, and animal care and control provide ongoing support to make sure there are no violations on that kennel operation. So if you look there, our true cost, and these are averages, is about $135. So therefore, the committee or task force did recommend adopting what our true cost is, and that would be the new set fee here in Fayette County if council approves it to obtain a kennel license here in Fayette County. Points to consider, current kennel ordinance, once again, does not put a limit on the number of dogs you can have here in Fayette County. It's actually unlimited. There are only currently 12 kennel licenses in Lexington. That may shock a few of you. As I said earlier, one dog can be just as much a problem in a neighborhood as five dogs, as we found out. And then enforcement of this ordinance falls under the code enforcement, Health Department, ACC, and building inspection. And then last but not least, there is an area we thought if council does want to consider putting a limit on the number of dogs on a property, it may be best done through the ZODA process via zoning and look at residential-type zones and get into that discussion. That's not a discussion that we had on the task force, because we do believe it is a separate discussion that needs to be taken if we choose to go that route. That would be something that's in your packet, that whole process. We have put under a tab in the packet, so if there is council, if there are council members wanting to do that, we can definitely do that. Barking dog ordinance. I think this is the big one that we got the most emails, phone calls, and public debate We looked at two general ordinances, 14-71, which is the general noise disturbance ordinance, and then the specific acts which relate to animals. Again, we looked at other cities. The fines are the biggest difference amongst the other cities. Once again, who enforces is on there as well. And, you know, even though this was the main ordinance that we had the most complaints about, there are several things that we tried to come up with, changes in the ordinance, different levels of enforcement, but we all kept coming back to the same reasoning, that there really isn't any recommended changes we can tell council today that they may want to pursue on this ordinance, because the ordinance itself, the noise ordinance, is currently being reviewed in the Services Committee. So we're already undertaking that, thanks to Councilmember Blues. The barking law itself is legally okay. Working with Andrea Weddle of our law department and county attorney Larry Roberts, there wasn't a lot of things we could do legally with changing that ordinance to make it more enforceable. We just need to enforce our current ordinance that's on the books. One thing that's very different from about a year ago is that now the county attorney's office is now prosecuting violators. They are actively going out and prosecuting cases as we speak on the barking dog ordinance. I do think this was different from about a year ago under different leadership, and I give a lot of credit to him and Larry Roberts and his staff for the willingness to do so, because some people in the community do feel there are more important issues. While if you're kept up at 2:00 AM and you've got a 6:00 AM job, it is an important issue to you. you. He also came up with an idea that going forward with offenders is issue a warning letter from his office, that he is planning on prosecuting you upon the next violation or phone call complaint, and having it come from him, his office may serve as a little better deterrent. And then last, citizens obviously must be willing to testify and document offenses. We had one lady who spoke to us, actually tape-recorded the barking in her neighborhood and documented the time and days of the barking, and it was, has been successfully moved forward in court. So these are things that we must tell citizens that they can do in order to prosecute the barking dog offenses. And then obviously additional ACC staffing will and can improve the response. And also talked a little bit earlier about the police department's response. You know, our police department does, on a priority basis, respond to our current noise ordinance, and we could have those discussions with our police department at after 11:30 PM when our animal care and control staff is not on active duty, only on call duty. There may be an opportunity to have our police respond to some of that. I'm not sure how we do it in terms of the priority list. It would fall wherever the noise ordinance falls on their priority, and they may or may not be able to get there even after hours. Other recommendations, other than the three or four that we just mentioned, council should review other ordinances that we have or don't have, for that matter, in regards to tethering of animals. We had a lot of discussion and request to review cats. Catteries seem to be a big issue in a lot of other states, and we did have some input on that. And then the vicious dog ordinance. That was another one that is already in the services committee, and hopefully this council can move forward with addressing some of the vicious dog issues. Review status of service yearly, and this could probably be done in the budget, at the budget hearings. We need to hear more about what their budget requests are, and we need to hear more about what's currently, the call volumes, et cetera, so we can address our dog issues properly. County attorney established a diversion program for offenders that offer behavior and obedience training. This is kind of a new concept that's similar to the alcohol diversion programs in courts where instead of going and pleading guilty, you're entered into a diversion program. In this case, it would be possibly for a second, a third offender, and have them go to really figure out what the root cause of why they're in violation consistently and look at the behavior of their dog, and they pay for the obedience training in lieu of the current fine or conviction. Also, better public education through public service announcements, GTB3, and then possibly sponsor behaviors for, or behavior training seminars through the Lexington Humane Society or other organizations in town, such as the Kennel Club, that do want us to take a look at that. And then last but not least, on this slide, animal care and control board as an oversight body. I know the mayor's recently appointed several new people, including Rick Curtis, to the ACC board. We think that may be the best avenue to start using that board to address several of these issues going forward and give oversight to our dog management issues. Other recommendations, establish more dog parks. I know Councilmember Gordon is a big fan of dog parks, and you did a great thing in helping us establish these from the beginning, but I think people want more of them, and the task force did agree to that. We needed to look at other sites, both north and south of Lexington. I know now we have them in east and west primarily of the city, but there is an opportunities for more of those to allow people to get their dogs more active, and more activity means less barking, hopefully at night. Last but not least, an education booklet produced by LFUCG that contains the following information. This is probably one of the bigger things as well in terms of recommendations, because quite honestly, people just don't know where to call, don't know what to do, don't know who to call, don't know what the process is when they do file or lodge a complaint regarding a dog activity. And in this booklet, we have probably thought would be best published by LFUCG so we can gather all the outside information, obviously tips on being a good dog owner, where the dog park locations are. Again, this is talked about earlier, communication, getting better communication out to the public. This would kind of look like our Citizens Answer Guide that we currently have now, be similar to that, and hopefully we could produce it cost-effectively here in the government and be able to distribute that. I know I said a lot today, but wanted to obviously take several questions from my colleagues and offer anybody who is in attendance to answer any questions as well today.
Councilmember Gort.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Stenit. I had a few questions. If we could look at page 18, and this may be one for Mr. Hawkins. It's nice to see you here. I'm flabbergasted, gobsmacked, as our Irish friends would say, that an officer makes $22,150. Is that, that's correct? Well, that's, benefits are not included there.
No, that includes benefits.
That includes benefits.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm, my, I just want to say I'm very surprised about that, the kind of work they have to do. I think that's very low.
They probably would agree with you.
Well, that's just an opinion, so I would hope we might look at that number. I have a question about your, you mentioned several times about dogs being off-leash on owner's property, and you specifically mentioned front yards, and I know a lot of people have invisible fencing. Did you discuss that?
Well, that's, we did, and that's actually in the ordinance.
Is that a harbor, is a harbor, can it be invisible fencing?
Well, it's other restraint devices, and it's currently addressed in the ordinance.
So it's all included in there?
Yes, ma'am. We did have discussion on that, though.
Okay. And then, did you talk about whether it would be appropriate, I think Andrea Weddle might know better, these all were, these ordinances were put into place before we had dog parks. So in the text where it mentions dogs in public parks, do we need to have an update in there that says except in dog parks or specific off-leash?
There's a separate ordinance, 4-23 of the Code of Ordinances provides an exception for all of our listed dog parks.
So it's not a part of, like, taking unleashed dogs into parks?
There is a specific provision that allows for dogs to be running at large within the dog parks as they are listed, 4-23.
So we don't need another one? And then just a comment about, I like your recommendation about more dog parks. Most dog owners know that when dogs can get good exercise and socialize with other dogs, they're better dogs. And I guess I would just point out, and I know your committee understands this, and Mr. Hawkins understands it, that every time we make a dog park, and we're about to make our fourth one out at Wellington and Clay's Mill, it costs many thousands of dollars. And all of that has been private money, except for the initial seed money. So if we really intend to, as a government, make more dog parks, it doesn't come free, and it involves funds. And Friends of the Dog Park have done a lot of work over the years to raise well over $60,000 now to put into dog parks. So that's just something that we would need to keep in mind if we're going to, you know, propose that and support that, is the cost. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember McCord.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I want to thank you, Councilmember Stenit, for taking on something that is maybe not the most sexy project out there, but it's certainly something that I hear a lot about in our district, and there are a couple of folks from the district on the task force, and I really appreciate your thoroughness. And just a couple of things. One is that the dog park that Councilmember Gordon mentioned is in my district, is in Wellington Park. That park is due to be opened in the spring of next year. Parks has laid in the parking lot, the five to eight acres worth of dog park is going in, and then soon we'll be announcing a mile and a half worth of trail that will go into that 32-acre park, and we're going to bring in a substantial park into the inventory of parks here. But I agree with Councilmember Gordon that we need to, as part of your all's recommendation, we need to be setting up some means whereby we can funnel a lot more private funds to create dog parks and create more recreational opportunities for dogs, because I think we've got them stacked up way too much in neighborhoods. My question to you is, after our questions here today, what is the next step for this body? Given all the work you've done, one of the things that we've talked about is moving past here it is, that's great, now we'll move on to the next presentation. What do you see us doing?
Well, I think it's important to note that there's still some public input that can be had and should be had on some of these issues, but I would see forthcoming forward probably next Tuesday with the resolutions themselves to support the recommendations that have been presented today, and then open up for discussion and debate publicly and to see where those recommendations go.
And I'd be happy to second those, because I really do think this is something that Councilmember Myers spent an entire year on, and, you know, there's just been a ton of work done on this, and I, again, appreciate what you've done and looking forward to just moving forward. So thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Maloney.
I too want to follow up, Councilman Stenit, on the great job that you did in putting this together. I think this is one piece of the puzzle. We have a few more, and I think you discussed the vicious dog that I, that I think in the last couple of days, we've seen a lot of information on television where some dogs attacked, especially lucky they haven't been in this area, but in Pulaski County and I believe somewhere else, a little child got bit by German Shepherd, and then an elderly lady who's been in intensive care. I think she's in fair condition now at University Hospital. But also in my district, in the last, I've got more calls than I have in a long time where dogs are attacking other animals and killing them, especially dogs, other dogs and cats. So I think this is a big part of the puzzle, but we still have a lot more to go. My question is on the kennel, and as I see now, if you have eight or more, you've got to go back and get it, is it eight or more to get a kennel? And does that also have to go to the Board of Adjustment before, for zoning or anything?
No.
How does that work? I mean, I've got, I know that two of them that are getting ready to go in my neighborhoods, there were questions, and I've had some phone calls from some neighborhoods that are concerned about this, and what can they do, or what can prevent this from happening?
I assume you mean prevent them from getting a kennel license?
Yeah.
Well, Chief Bowen, do you want to address that?
Chief Bowen is probably the best person to give you that explanation.
There's nothing at this time that would prevent somebody from getting or applying for a kennel license with the city. Once the application's been received by our division, then the inspection begins, and that is where the four different divisions comes in. They have to meet the standards of the ordinance before they're granted their permit.
Well, let me ask you this. Do you all look at the zoning and the location? I mean, to me, a kennel, and I don't mean to be, I don't think it should be in the intersection, what I personally feel, and I hope you all have recommendations.
That's part of the zoning's operation, they're named in there.
Please?
That's part of the zoning's operation. As I said earlier, there's four different divisions that look at it. We have different parts of the standards that is broken down for the standards that we look at, zoning, the health department, and building inspections, and ACNC.
Now, what would zoning be considered in a residential subdivision? Would that be a, do you know, to your knowledge, are there any kennels out there that are in neighborhoods like a residential area?
Yes.
They are?
Yes.
Now, to me, that's something that I think is a big concern, and I really, I'm not trying to penalize, but if somebody's going to be in that kind of business, I really think they should be out in the country or somewhere, because to me, that becomes a nuisance with dog barking, and I really think it becomes, that's why we have, certain businesses are not allowed to be in a residential area, and I really feel that it's something, maybe that, I don't know if this is the place to look at, or maybe law can answer that, but it, where these kennels that they're trying to put in my district, I have some serious concerns because of the residence, it is a subdivized area, and I just feel that it's going to be more of a nuisance, because it's already a nuisance as it is, because neighbors are complaining big time about how many dogs are there now, and if they're going to allow a kennel there in a residential area, it's just going to be more problems, and I just wanted to figure out how these neighbors have a right to fight them. You may be able to answer some of that.
Just a point of clarification for you. The Division of Building Inspection does review the applications to make certain that the zoning is appropriate for the location of the kennel, but the zoning ordinance only triggers exclusions for commercial operations versus, most of these applications are just your regular citizen who has eight or more dogs. They're not selling or breeding, things of that nature. So it's not a commercial operation, which means the zoning doesn't become a barrier to them if they're appropriately zoned, and in most cases they are, but the Division of Building Inspection does verify that they do meet the zoning requirements as part of the application process.
Okay, thank you. And then the last, and I noticed the other cities where you have, how many dogs are allowed anywhere from some counties, cities of four all the way up to eight, to five, to six. Are you all, I noticed that you all can come up with a recommendation on how many dogs, and then, are you guys, did you all feel that there needs to be more study on that? That there is a problem with that many dogs, or did you see that there was an issue that eight was too many, or did you all feel that maybe the five might be right, six maybe right? Was there a number that you all felt that was comfortable, more than eight or whatever, or less than eight, that you felt? Then where does that go to? I mean, do we have to put that in another committee for discussion?
Yeah, I think the overall recommendation was through the zoning process, the ZODA amendment process. That was one of our recommendations. That's probably the best way to limit the number of dogs. For instance, Louisville does have a zoning ordinance that says up to a half acre, you can have three dogs. Between a half acre and two acres, you can have seven dogs. Above two acres, you can have as many as you want. So they've done it that way. Other cities have just put a flat number saying that's it, you can't have more than that. We could not come to a consensus on the exact number or the best way to get there. Probably the average homeowner, I think Chief Bowen said around five dogs they have here in the city, five to six dogs.
Now, who oversees that?
That they get complaints on, on the number.
Now, who oversees that planning? Is that the Planning Commission that would be overseeing that?
We could initiate that, and then the Planning Commission.
Did the city initiate?
The council.
Council initiate, and then make the recommendation, the planning, and the planning, well...
Planning Commission would make the recommendation, right. Same as any other zone amendment.
Well, I appreciate, and I know that that's part of the puzzle. We still got some more to go, but I appreciate everything.
And one point, and I appreciate you bringing it up, is, and why the task force couldn't really come up with a good language for a zone amendment, is because of the mixed-use zones. How do you address residential versus commercial in that zone? So that's something that we probably do need to continue to take a look at going forward. And also to your point of, you know, more dogs may mean more barking, more nuisance. We already have laws on the books to address all that, and that's the whole issue of going back to, we talked about housing, that's enforceable, we currently have. If they have one dog or 10 dogs, barking's still a violation if it's excessive.
One other question. Why did they go from 12 to six back in '98?
Well, one was funding what was withdrawn from the Humane Society at the time, and I can give you, the detailed explanation is in your packet, your binder, but the short explanation is due to lack of funding.
But this year...
We never did pick up the slack from a government end and allow them to maintain their current levels.
So your recommendation next Tuesday is that we increase this and put it in the mayor's budget for next year to allow these numbers? And I go back to what Linda says, that the income that these folks are making is, I don't know how anybody can make it on that amount, so hopefully we can come up with some better numbers on...
Well, there's no question, they do a great job for what they're paid, and our staff is excellent. Chief Bowen does a great operation. But one, to your point, we are recommending this funding happen as soon as possible, not necessarily wait until next budget cycle. I know the dollars are tight, but, you know, by the time we get people onboard and trained, we're back in the April, May, in the busy season again, and if we wait until next July, August, we're looking at next September, October, almost a year from now, and we really don't have that luxury to wait.
Well, again, I thank you.
Councilmember Beard.
Just a couple of questions, Kevin. Thank you. Explain to me, it was a little fuzzy when you went through this, I guess, just exactly what is the reporting structure and where does animal care and control fit, if you were to put it on a chart somewhere?
Yeah, we did put charts in your binder there, but the reporting structure and...
Chief Bowen, do you want to explain? You provided us some excellent charts about dispatch, et cetera. Do you want to explain some of that? And I assume you're talking about the, when a call's received, how they're dispatched, et cetera?
Well, that's part of it. You made a point of saying they are not employees of LFUCG, and that just takes me somewhere, but I'm not sure, I'm trying to find out where it takes me, I guess. takes me, I guess.
Well, you mean, who are they employed by?
Who does Chief Bowen report to on a day-to-day basis?
Bert.
So, that hasn't changed from when I was on the board. Okay.
No.
All right, the second question really, Chief, is, involves the more exotic animals that you run into and, you know, there's increasing deer pressure that you, we find in Fayette County. Do you all deal with that or try to deal with that?
We deal with wildlife on the issue, whether it's sick, injured, or a public threat and that's the only time we have any involvement with wildlife issues. Public property, a threat to the public.
Okay, because I know at one time, for instance, on Walden, where, essentially where Ball Homes operation sits right now, it used to be deer grazing there every afternoon. And, you know, hop, skip and a jump for a deer is the middle of Tate's Creek Road.
Correct.
And do you attempt to try to move?
No, we don't.
Populations, is that something to look at?
Well, I think that's better addressed as far as fish and wildlife goes because they have regulations on handling their wildlife permits and things like that that we have had to have obtained in the past. We don't obtain anymore because actually the state started charging for their permits for us to handle their endangered species and things like that.
Okay, thank you all very much.
Councilmember Myers.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thanks, Kevin, for your work on this task force. Just a couple of questions about the kennel law. I think in the past, before the law was changed, I think they allowed 11 dogs. Is that correct? Before you had to apply for a kennel license? Do you?
Andrea. The number previously was 10.
Was 10.
It was reduced to eight.
Okay. Is it, does the Building Inspection have to go out and do a site visit as part of that application process?
I don't think Building Inspection does a site visit. I think they, they do a review for whether or not it's in compliance with the zoning code, but I couldn't speak for exactly what they do out on the site. I know, obviously, the animal care and control folks do go out and do a site visit. The Health Department does a site visit. I don't know specifically what code enforcement or Building Inspection do in their review.
Okay. Those two groups that do the site visit, is there an objective criteria that they use to make their evaluation or assessment?
The ordinance is fairly detailed in what is required. It talks about spacing and shelter and habitation, all encompassing. So, you know, they, they know what they're supposed to be looking for and hopefully are looking at those issues.
Okay. And I know when we looked at this issue before, there was a lot of conversation about that criteria not really being objective enough. When, Kevin, you spoke about Louisville's law, when they had specific space requirements for the number of dogs. Did you guys look at making adjustments to our amendments to our code to include that type of objective look?
No, we really didn't look at the kennel standards, I think is what you're referring to. There's about five pages of ordinance just to those standards.
Right.
We focused more on can a kennel ordinance be used to limit the number of dogs per se in terms of what can be had in a residential property that Councilman Maloney was discussing. We didn't get into the standards and it's also important to note, to note that the Louisville ordinance is currently in litigation. So, there's a lot of good things in their 49-page ordinance, but-
They have big ones, eh?
It's currently being challenged in court now. So, we really didn't try to stay away from their ordinance as much as possible.
Did you look at the history of it changing from 10 dogs to eight dogs and?
We didn't get into going back and to why they changed it from 10 to eight currently. We more focused on can we limit a number?
Well, if they changed it from 10 to eight, that would suggest we can limit the number, doesn't it?
Not really because, again, it doesn't say that you can, it just says once you hit a number and we can pick eight, 10, 14, then you just must pay a, pay a small fee and get a license. It didn't say you gotta stop having a certain number. That's the problem. That's why we didn't really look at and rationalize why they dropped it from 10 to eight.
Okay.
Point is, it's unlimited no matter what number it was.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Gray.
Councilmember Stenit, I'm just gonna jump on the commendation train. I know this was not an issue that had any contentiousness whatsoever to it. It was real easy for you to manage it through. You did a good job.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. It was very well done and I know it's important to a lot of people. Anything further?
Well, a couple of things, Mayor, in summation. I want to thank Bert Hawkins. He's with us today and he is actually, are you officially retired now?
So.
December 1st is his last day as our Humane Society Director. I think we owe him an ovation and a round of applause and thank you. Any departing words, your last time before council as the Humane Society Director?
I want to make one last question about your folks who will be, I think you do this.
You want to introduce your kind of person?
I can't. You folks will meet the new executive director soon, as I did. She'll come around from office to office after she begins. It's Ms. Susan Malcolm, who is a local resident of Fayette County and has a 20-year history as a volunteer with the Humane Society and she's a very passionate lady. She may not have started in government as I did in 1974 here, so she won't know some of you old timers the way that I did. I do appreciate, this council has done some innovative things. You passed a couple of really innovative ordinances that other communities have called and asked us about. The ordinance, it has to do with adoptions and controlling adoptions in Fayette County in 2001. A couple of years ago, the one that had to do with spay and neutering ordinance that provides for low-income and no-income people, a fund through the government to get their animals spayed. That's up to over 2,000 people that have taken, 2,000 families and animals taking advantage of that now. I do appreciate the support that you've given, although we were, we finally had to draw a line in the sand and say the Humane Society's not gonna pay for government service anymore. You saw that when it was back to 764,000 a year and that the city gets what they pay for and that's what's coming before you now. Mr. Stenit's been working on this for over two years that I know of and gathering it. But the one point I do want to make, first, thank you, government, for a lot of opportunities I've had here, but the number of eight officers on the street and a total of 12 officers is an absolute minimum, folks. That should've happened years ago. You're not talking about funding a well-staffed society. We can give you statistics that shows that we should have 16 to 18 officers. Just depends on what you want to pick from. This is a step in the right direction. I'm not sure we could include six more quickly and do it well, so I'm not asking for an increase in that, but you do need to know as you move forward that that's just a minimum size animal and care and control operation. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Gordon.
Mr. Bert Hawkins, while you're still in the room, I just want to add my own personal thanks because I did have the opportunity to work with you on the spay and neuter program and I think when you came to the Humane Society, you, you really, from that time forward, have brought it along very well and have served our community well. And I think you were already retired, maybe, when you were asked to come back. And so, yes. And so, thank you very much. You've, you've done a great job out there.
Thank you. If there's no further comments, we will move on to council reports. And it looks like Councilmember Gordon is first to count.
Thank you, Mayor. I have three items. The first is that council members, today, you should have received a Stormwater Oversight Committee packet and we wanted to get it to you today because we're all going on break and the meeting is next week on the 27th of November at 11:30. It's at this stormwater meeting that we discuss with our engineers, the annual stormwater report, and projects will get added or deleted from the list. And so, I would encourage all council members to attend on the 27th. Secondly, you have each received a copy of the council calendar for 2008. And first, I want to thank Rebecca Langston, our council administrator, who put a lot of effort into this calendar and who solicited information from council members to put it together. Lots of folks in the community pay attention to our calendar and schedule annual meetings and such so that they won't be on council meeting nights. The reason it was important to have all of our meetings on this calendar is that we officially will adopt the calendar and then it will get advertised and so anything that's on this calendar can go ahead and be advertised. And I want to thank the mayor because we now know that the mayor's State of the Merge Government Address will be at 6:00 PM on January 29th and that will be on the calendar. And then-
Dinner will not be provided.
Dinner will not be provided. Eat at 5:30 before you come. I understand it's going to be at the Opera House. Great venue. And then, so with that said, I'd like to go ahead and move the council 2008 calendar onto the docket for approval.
I have a motion and second to approve the 2008 calendar. Any discussion? Councilmember Blevins?
I think the motion was to put on the docket.
I'm sorry. You're correct. Stand corrected. Any discussion on that? Councilmember Blevins.
Thank you, Mayor. Just real quick, the calendar calls for four sanitary, excuse me, Stormwater Oversight Committee meetings and six sanitary sewer oversight committee meetings. I think both of those committees feel like that may not be enough. I don't want to derail this process. I think it's a great calendar, but I would ask that both of those committees take on the task of considering how best to organize and move forward next year. That's all.
Councilmember Stenit.
Thank you, Mayor. On August, on page nine, on the August meeting, is there a reason why on the 14th and 21st, we have it back-to-back council meetings and then go three weeks? Wouldn't it be better if we have it the 14th and 28th?
That was, there was some input from council members about not having a meeting on the 28th. We did not have a meeting last year, the Thursday before Labor Day. And so, there are a couple of places in this calendar where we go three weeks. There's another one in October.
October, yeah.
Because of the Kentucky League of Cities Conference. We, it, basically, this was based on last year's calendar.
I just know usually when we have three weeks in between meetings, there's a greater urgency to do all the second readings and forego our normal process. So, just trying to combat some of that, but I understand with Labor Day.
Okay.
Vice Mayor Gray.
Just as a point of information, there'd been some conversation, we've been having some conversation about perhaps luncheon work sessions and that's not on the calendar yet. We had this conversation at the workshops, right, restoring that. That had been a protocol, I think, earlier. So, there'd been some conversation about that. Not on the calendar yet, but I think we need to be flexible to continuing and reintroducing that.
And that's a really good point. Workshops and some committee of the whole budget meetings, those will all, can all be added as the year progresses and the council sees what we need to put on there.
Anything further? Seeing nothing. Those in favor of adding the calendar to the docket, please indicate by voting aye electronically. Those opposed, vote nay electronically. Motion carries. Thank you.
One more item and also just to mention, if, when the council votes on the calendar, we'll ask our council administrator to put it out on the, whichever drive it is that all of government can see and will want to put it on the website so that the public can also see it. Finally, I wanted to make some comments. Council members have received a lot of, well, some of us have received several emails about the Veterans Day Parade and there have been some letters to the editor about the fact that there were no elected officials at the Veterans Day Parade. And I just wanted to mention, this is a personal comment, that, you know, the Veterans Parade was not an official activity and some of us, myself included, were out of state. I, in particular, was helping my daughter celebrate her 30th birthday. And council members, because we're part-time, we do look ahead at the schedule and we see blocks of time when we can do those family things or outside things that we need to do. And I just wanted to say to the public, I think it's very difficult to look at an event and make an assumption about what council members are doing or not doing and where their hearts are because many of us up here care very deeply for our veterans and work in many ways for our veterans on an ongoing basis. So, I just felt the need to make those comments because I know it's difficult for council members sometimes to juggle public and family activities.
I appreciate you raising that point. I would add, I don't know about you all, but I didn't receive an invitation to participate. And, you know, it's one of these situations where if you're not invited and you try to get invited, you're criticized for turning it into a political event. If you don't get invited and you don't go, you get criticized for not going. So, I regret that anybody might be offended by that and to the extent, at least from my standpoint, my presence is wanted in the future, I'll be glad to participate. But thanks for raising that point. Councilmember McCord.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. One is the Kentucky Recs and Parks Society had their annual meeting this past week and a number of folks from Lexington, Fayette Urban County Government received honors and awards and I just wanted to point out a few of those publicly. Ms. Evelyn Bologna received the fellow award and a presidential citation. The Lexington Adult Therapeutic Fitness Program received the outstanding program award. Phyllis Arnold received the support award. Outgoing president and former director of parks Chuck Ellis awarded Debbie Holleran a presidential citation for her support for this particular, this particular event. The Toyota America League, which is in, in the 9th District in Shilohoe Park, received the facilities award and Ms. Diane Bonifer received a special award for over 20 years of service to Parks and Rec and we're certainly grateful to have her around still down at the DDA. And so, I wanted just to certainly let those folks be known and recognized publicly. Also, I'd like to, we had a traffic study done in the 9th District for the intersection or the multi-way stop analysis at Cornwall and Cromwell Drive and traffic engineering came back with this meets criteria. Ms. Ashley Sales is in the audience if there's any questions, but I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that a multi-way stop be placed at the corner of Cornwall Drive and Cromwell Way. So moved.
Second.
Do I?
And add it to the docket.
All right. Now, I'm with you.
Yeah.
The motion is to add to the docket the establishment of a four-way stop at Cromwell and-
Cornwall, please.
Right, Cornwall.
Cornwall and Cromwell.
Okay, Cornwall and Cromwell. I apologize. Any discussion? And those in favor, please indicate by voting aye electronically. Those opposed, vote nay. Thank you. That motion carries.
Thank you. And just lastly, I want to wish the Dunbar Band, I want to wish them well in the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade. This is a, not only a phenomenal band, but the parents and the supporters of this group have worked very tirelessly to get them to this event and we just wish them well. Safe travels and, and just thank them for all that they do for our community. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Blevins.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to move approval of this week's Neighborhood Development Fund List. So moved.
Any discussion? And those in favor, please indicate by voting aye electronically. Those opposed, vote nay. Thank you. That's all I had. Motion carries. Thank you. Councilmember Blevins. Councilmember Myers.
Thank you, Mayor. The Tate's Brook Neighborhood Association will be hosting, as you know, the mayor's night out. It's been changed to this coming Monday, November 26th. It'll be held from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM at Tate's Brook Church on the corner of Trent Boulevard and Appian Way. We appreciate you coming out for that. I know you're gonna bring a host. You may want to speak about that. You're gonna bring some other folks with you from government to be able to answer questions.
We will. We'll bring some of the key folks from the administration that can answer the public safety, the public works and the parks questions that are the ones that normally come up in those settings. I'll be there as well as some folks from the office to address all matters and hope everybody can turn out.
Thank you. I know that the leadership of the Tate's Brook Neighborhood Association has been doing a lot to advertise this across the whole 8th District. I think we're gonna have a great turnout. And I just want to say also, I appreciate Lou and all- And I just want to say also, I appreciate Lou and all the leadership at Tatesbrook Neighborhood Association for putting this together. Secondly, Park Place Neighborhood Association met recently and elected a new president, and I would like to welcome and congratulate Jeremy Brand and his wife and family, and look forward to working with him as he leads that neighborhood. I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's fine.
Okay.
I thought you were through.
Oh, no, not through yet. In addition, I'll be hosting two meetings of neighborhoods next Thursday, November 29th. Residents in the Mount McKinley neighborhood outside of Manowar will meet at 6:00 PM, and then residents in the Carnegie, or Carriage Lane area will meet at 7:00 PM. Both meetings will be held at the H Ball offices at 3146 Custer Drive. And then, last but certainly not least, I want to say that today is a very special day for me. It is Beth and I's third wedding anniversary, and I just wanted to thank my beautiful bride, Beth, for one, answering yes and being answered prayer, and also for being my best friend and for giving me our bundle of joy, Aubrey, and for serving with me as the First Lady of the 8th District. And I love you very much, and I can't wait to see you tonight. That concludes my report.
I think we had adjourned on that.
Oh, there you are. I'm sorry. Councilmember Blues.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't think I can follow that. I'll bring this down to earth here. I want to announce a, a public meeting of, on, on north and northwest Lexington transportation issues. That's going to be held at 7:00 PM Tuesday, November 27th, at Wesley United Methodist Church, 1825 Russell Cave Road. That Wesley Church is, is located out, out Russell Cave Road, going out of Lexington left-hand side, almost to Windburn Drive. I want to invite the, the public in, in our side of town to join a conversation with neighbors and state and local officials about traffic and transportation issues. We'll discuss that night what it is that will make getting around north, northwest Lexington safer, more efficient, less congested. And this is a great opportunity for, for members of the public and, and Northside neighborhoods to express their concerns about transportation issues, traffic control, congestion, safety, public transportation, road conditions, needed projects, you name it. If you've got something to say, please join this, this meeting. We'll have a, a large group of people there to, to respond to questions, listen to what you have to say. We'll have LFUCG Transportation Planning and Engineering Staff, Traffic Engineering, Streets and Roads Division will be represented, Division of Police, State Department of Highways Planning and Engineering Staff, Representative from Lex Tran, and the council members from the 1st, Andrea James, District 6, Kevin Stenit, and, and myself from the 2nd. So, please, please plan to attend. This is going to be an important event Tuesday, November 27th, 7:00 at Wesley United Methodist Church. Two, two Neighborhood Association meetings coming up. Monday, November 26th, 7:00, Oakwood Neighborhood Association will meet in the Community Center in Oakwood Park. And at that same time, the Radcliffe Marlboro Neighborhood Association meeting will be held at the Northside Library on Russell Cave Road. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Beard.
Thank you, Mayor. First, maybe on a lighter note, anyway, I would like to wish my colleagues, the council staff, the administration, all of the employees of LFUCG, as well as all of our constituents a happy and safe Thanksgiving. And secondly, back to business, I would like to make a motion to place into the Services Committee the subject of commissioning a study of the Zandale Ditch, affectionately known as the Zandale Ditch, for the enhancement of its safety, appearance, and its ability to adequately function as originally intended.
Second.
Councilmember Beard has moved, and Councilmember Gordon has seconded a motion to refer to the Services Committee the matter of the Zandale Ditch. Any discussion? Those in favor of referring that item to the Services Committee, please indicate by voting aye electronically. Those opposed, vote nay. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Stevens.
I'm sorry, you won't have dinner at your January 29th report, but there may be something to chew over anyhow. I appreciate being invited to Altech, as was the council and administrative staff this morning. It's quite an impressive place, and I can see that Mr. Lyons knows what he's doing. The Corridors Committee met at 11:30 this morning, and we approved an RFP for Newtown Pike from Main Out and for Harrisburg Road from Main down to Military Pike, which means we'll do a study, corridor study on both those areas. And the one on Newtown Pike, we have received a grant from Transportation Enhancement to do that project, but will be compromised somewhat, I think, by the plans of the Highway Department to take over Newtown Pike from the interchange at New Circle Road out to this interstate, because they plan to pretty well strip away both sides of that road and take away five feet on each side, according to the report we had. So, we're going to have to figure out what we want to do with Newtown Pike in preparation for the World Equestrian Games, which Mr. Lyons told us we had to do this morning. I also learned at the Corridors Committee that it's up to us to approve applications for awards and grants, and I would like the forbearance of the council to approve a forestry applying to Home Depot for a $75,000 award regarding urban trees. And I'm doing it this way, because if we go through the usual process, it might be past the deadline to apply before it could be done.
Second.
So, I move that we approve forestry applying to the Home Depot for its Urban Forest Award.
Councilmember Stevens has moved, and Councilmember Myers has seconded a motion that we authorize forestry to apply for a grant from Home Depot for street trees.
I know, my point was that if we approve them today, it, it won't go on the docket, because they can then apply for the grant. If we wait till it goes through the docket process, it'll be too late.
I don't know whether or not we can take that action at, at this particular meeting. Can we parliamentarian do that?
At the Corridors Committee meeting this morning, we learned that there is a grant available from Home Depot, and that it, there are time constraints on it, so I'm introducing a motion to approve their application for that grant, or award. And if we go through the usual process of blue sheeting it next week and do the process, it'll be too late.
Point of order, could we not just authorize them to make the, send in their request or proposal, but not really technically approve it until we bring it back before the council?
How about if we just do it?
Yeah, that's what, I mean, just...
And, and then we'll come back around for ratification of it here in 10 days, two weeks.
Suits me, as long as we give permission to Mr. Greer to go ahead and submit the proposal.
Commissioner Kelly, if you can move forward with that, we'd appreciate it.
Think that'll work? Anything else?
No, that's it.
Great.
Councilmember Stenit.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, there's a lot of good things that always happen for holiday seasons, but I want to thank Commissioner Kelly and Leo McMillan for, for the hard work they did Friday, and they were out there getting Bryant Road in Hamburg paved, and I really appreciate that. For those of you who don't know, it's a new traffic flow pattern that we came up with back in the summer that put a lot more heavy, a lot of heavy use on the Bryant Road and was still the old farm road, so to speak, in terms of its configuration, and it got paved, and people can now safely travel through Hamburg a lot better. Thank you all for doing that. We really appreciate you doing it all in one day, too. Pretty, pretty impressive. We have a meeting on Monday night. It's called the Stakeholders of Bryan Station High School Meeting. Everyone knows that we've had a new high school built, $43 million high school, and there's a group of parents, alumni, elected officials, and, and people in the community that care about Bryan Station a great deal. And because of that, they're having their first stakeholders meeting on Monday night, the 26th of November, this upcoming Monday, at 7:00 PM, from 7:00 to 9:00 in the auditorium there at the high school. So, anyone that wants to take ownership and pride and come support what's happening at Bryan Station High School, we welcome you to come Monday night and listen to what's going on and listen to the people that are really trying to make a difference there at the high school. And also, want to announce the Eastland Parkway Neighborhood Meeting next Tuesday night, the 27th, at 6:30 at Christ Center Church at their normal meeting venue. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Councilmember James.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to let everyone, remind the residents in the Meadows-Loudon area that there's the regular Meadows-Loudon Neighborhood Association meeting tonight. That's at 7:00, and that's located at 634 East Loudon Avenue. I believe the name of the church is Grace Baptist Church there. Also, wanted to talk about the meeting, last council meeting I talked about, and Neighborhood Association was going to be meeting for the first time. It's not association, it's just the neighbors. The James Court Brown Avenue, we had our meeting last night at the Central Kentucky Job Center. Wanted to thank security. They went above and beyond of getting us in the building and out of the building, and I wanted to thank our security, and also the, the adult services that's meeting over there to open that space up to us. It was a great meeting. Neighbors that had never met one another, living on the same street, were able to talk with one another last night. If you missed that meeting, you're resident of that area, feel free to contact my office at 258-3216, and we'll be sure to update you on the progress of the meeting and get you connected for future meetings. And also, wanted to reiterate to my constituents to attend the meeting that Councilmember Blues talked about. We get a lot of comments about traffic, transportation, Northside Lexington. Here's your opportunity to come and voice those concerns to those folks that are making those decisions, that are part of that process. So, don't fail us 1st, 2nd, and 6th Districts. This is your time to come and be involved and show that we too, on the North Side, care about traffic issues and transportation issues. So, we've, we've got to show up in large number. For more information about that, feel free to contact my office, Councilmember Blues' office, or Councilmember Stenit's office. We need you to show up. Also, I'm really looking forward to Thanksgiving this year, and I just wanted to say Happy Thanksgiving to my constituents all of Lexington, and I'm looking for a really good corn pudding recipe. If anybody's got one, be sure to, to shoot me an email. I may have to make several different versions and, and let you know who's, which one's best. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to put on the docket the finding, to accept the finding of the Division of Traffic Engineer and install a multi-way stop sign at the intersection of Anniston Avenue and Unity Drive.
Did you say Anniston Avenue and...
Addison and Unity.
Addison, I'm sorry, and what?
Addison and Unity.
Unity, all right. I have a second, but Councilmember Gordon. All those in favor of adding that item to the docket, if there's no discussion, please indicate by voting aye electronically. Those opposed, vote nay. Motion carries.
I want to go back to this, is why do we have to put these on the docket? After the Traffic Engineers checked, and it's a safety reason, and they support it, the neighborhood supports it, and we got to wait another month to get this thing put up, when it should have been put up a year ago? And how come we have to bring everything to the council when the Traffic Engineer and everybody's on the same page to go ahead and do this?
To be honest with you, I don't have a clue.
Well, I just, it's wasting time, is what I'm trying to say, isn't it?
Well, I'm, I'm...
Well, fine, but I mean, if it comes to safety and everybody's agreeing on this, I don't see why, I mean, all they do is put a sign up, and it's just going to be another stop sign. We already have a stop sign in the back somewhere that they can put another one up. I don't think it's going to cost a bunch of money.
Councilmember Stenit and Councilmember Gordon, I think, have correctly identified the problem, and that is, it does require an expenditure of funds to get it done, and, and that's the process.
I just think it's a waste, but that's fine. The other thing is...
I have several, I have several other examples like that. I'd be glad to discuss with you if you care to take them up, but I understand your frustration.
It's been brought to my attention by a lot of employees about the healthcare benefits, which I think is great, but they have some concerns about the police and fire, where they're making $175 more through their benefit than the, than, I know the collective bargaining and all that is part of it, but it concerns me, is I notice some of the employees are talking about going to collective bargaining now for these kind of reasons, and it's, and I don't think, Mayor, I don't know what you can do or whatever, but it's just, it's just to me, to be fair across the board for these employees, maybe we ought to look and make sure, there's some way we can answer their concerns and why it costs a hundred, why the police and fire are getting more money because of collective bargaining, but, I mean, if I was an employee and I saw what's going on, I guess I'd be wanting to be a collective bargain, too, to know that I can get additional more benefits. It's just, hopefully, next year, when the budget comes around, that we do work with the employees, all employees, to make sure it's fair across the board, that, I mean, health benefits, it's probably, is a big, huge amount of money that affect every, only these employees' lives. And to see something like that, it just, I mean, it, it really adds on to the fire, and it really gets the morale of the employees sent back, are we that important or not? And I just, hopefully, when the budget comes around, we do treat everybody fairly.
I think we are subsidizing the health insurance costs this year to the tune of about $2 million, is a little more than $2 million, as I recall, in order to avoid the necessity of increasing everybody's health insurance. I'm not sure we've made that point adequately enough.
I think we should be telling employees that, because they call me, you know...
But it, it was no small effort to try to keep health insurance costs in line this time around. But Commissioner Coe, if you would get together with, with Councilmember Maloney...
Maybe you might want to present that to employees, let them know that we did save them money another way and, and, and increase, because it...
I, I hope they will just visit with their friends who have other employers and find out what's going on in the health, health insurance market right now. And the fact we're able to keep our, our health insurance rates where they are is nothing short of miracle. Thank you.
Well, and I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor.
Well, if you all will get together, we'll see if we can't, can't get your response. Councilmember Lyons.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to discuss an issue of high importance to the council at Seren Drive, and I was going to ask Commissioner Public Works, Don Kelly, just to come down and give us a one-minute update on the construction process out there, because I've had a lot of people inquiring about the status of construction.
Putting me on the spot. The, I have not checked on it this week, I have to apologize for that, but there was some conflict with Kentucky American needing to relocate some water lines, which delayed our folks, and they've decided to go ahead and, and do the work without, let Kentucky American do their work later. And I'm not sure where we are today. I apologize for not knowing.
Well, one of the questions has been whether we'll be able to complete it before the weather gets too bad. Do we look like we're going to be okay there?
The intent is to do that, yes, sir. The, in fact, originally, they said they'd be able to do the work within a week if the water lines were relocated, and so we think we can get it done next week. Of course, we're getting into the weather issue right now, pretty far.
Thank you. There was just 60 seconds. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Stevens.
I was just ready to make a motion, but I don't know if it's appropriate for doing a closed session.
All right. I think that concludes the council reports, unless another member has something to add. I have no mayor's report. The only agenda item left is public comment on any issues not on the agenda. Does anyone wish to comment? Seeing none, Councilmember Stevens.
I move pursuant to KRS 61.81... I move pursuant to KRS sixty-one dot eighty-one oh parentheses one C to go into closed session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation matters involving the Lexington, Fayette, Urban County Government.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor, please indicate by voting aye electronically. Those opposed, vote nay electronically. Motion carries. We will stand in recess until the chambers are cleared and the doors are closed.